All right, I got the thing from Al. Like to call to order the Monday, November first, two thousand twenty-one, meeting of the Common Council of the City of Algoma. I'd like the clerk to take the roll, please.
Merring?
Here.
Dashlet?
Here.
Boor?
Here.
Piarkey?
Here.
Lattenbach?
Here.
Mervorden?
Here.
Pabick?
Here.
Schmidt?
He'll be late. All right, please rise for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Let the minutes reflect that this meeting was posted in compliance with the open meeting law. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda as published? Hearing none will accept the motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Casey.
Second.
Second by Leah. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Approval of the meeting minutes from October sixth and October nineteenth. Did everybody have a chance to review those? Any corrections or additions? Hearing none will accept the motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Scott.
I'll second.
Second by John. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Posed? Motion carries. Public comment. Is there anybody here this evening under public comment?
Am I allowed to make a public comment?
Are you a public?
I guess. I just wanted to, um, in our last spirited meeting, um, Randy made an offer that, uh, after the meeting, I thought it kind of got glassed over, and I just wanted to thank him. Doesn't matter what the offer was, I think we all know what it was, but thank him for being the team player for the city, because I don't think we even acknowledged that he made the offer. It was for the police to open the, the youth center. And I just wanted to let him know that I at least appreciated the fact that he was a team player and stepped up for the city, which is, I hope, what we're trying to do in the whole city.
Okay. Okay. I must have missed that offer.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you again for your offer.
I was here to help.
All right. Anybody else under public comment? Hearing none. We'll move on to consideration of general bills and credit card payments. Did everyone have a chance to review them in the packet? Are there any questions on any of the bills? Hearing none will accept the motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Steve?
Second.
Second by Casey. Roll call vote, please.
Schmidt?
Not here, sorry.
Pabick?
I think I have to abstain.
Mervorden?
Yes.
Piarkey?
Yes.
Lattenbach?
Yes.
Boor?
Yes.
Dashlet?
Yes.
Merring?
Yes.
There are no requests for any conference attendance, correct? And there are no claims against the city. Good. Let's move on to committee reports. Everybody have a chance to review all the committee reports? Any questions on any of them?
So moved.
Moved by Lee?
Second.
Second by Steve. Do accept the, uh, committee reports. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Aye.
Posed? Motion carried. There is no old business, new business. We're starting out with the proclamation, which I will read. Bear with me. And this is for the proclamation setting the week of January twenty-third through January twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two, as school choice week in the City of Algoma. Whereas all children in Algoma shall have access to the highest quality education possible, and whereas the City of Algoma recognizes the important role that an effective education plays in preparing all students in Algoma to be successful adults, and whereas quality education is critically important to the economic vitality of the City of Algoma, and whereas the City of Algoma is home to a multitude of high-quality public and non-public schools from which parents can choose for their children, in addition to families who educate their children in the home, and whereas educational variety not only helps to diversify our economy, but enhances the vibrancy of our community, and whereas the City of Algoma has many high-quality teaching professionals in all types of school settings who are committed to educating our children, and whereas school choice week is celebrated across the country by millions of students, parents, educators, schools, and organizations to raise awareness of the need of effective educational options, now therefore I, Wayne R. Schmidt, as mayor of the City of Algoma, to hereby proclaim the week of January twenty-third through the twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two, as the City of Algoma's school choice week, and I urge all citizens to celebrate this observance and to support education efforts. Thank you. We will move on to the liquor license application for Millie's Pub and Grub. And this evening, we do have, and again, your first name, Millie?
Megan.
Megan. Megan Lattenbach, correct?
Yes.
Megan Lattenbach is here this evening. She is the new owner of the former Apes here in Algoma on Fourth Street, and, uh, she's going to be opening up soon, I take it?
Two weeks, hopefully.
Two weeks, okay. I'm going to give you a little plug. Two weeks, and are you going to be open what days?
Every day except for Wednesday.
Every day except for Wednesday. Okay. Is that going to be for lunch also?
Lunch and dinner.
Good, good. And she has applied for a liquor license. They've gone through all the, uh, background checks and everything, so I would like to accept the motion to approve that.
So moved.
Aye.
Wait, wait, Jake, hang on a minute. Was that Casey?
John.
John moved. K- Casey second. Sorry, Jake. Uh, any questions or comments? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Welcome, Megan.
Thank you very much.
Sure. All right. Resolution ten eighty-eight. Uh, this is to authorize the city to go ahead with the purchase of the new ambulance. We had this brought up at our finance and personnel meeting. Uh, Captain Kelly Cuss of the rescue squad and also Chief Ackerman were on hand to talk about, and I think Rory Gressel too was on hand, and they did a slide presentation on the needs and of the, of a new ambulance for the City of Algoma. So the recommendation is coming from the finance and personnel committee and also the PP committee to allow them to purchase a two thousand twenty-two Chevy, I think it's a Chevy chassis, from Foster Coach for Horton Ambulance in the amount of two-hundred one thousand seven hundred and seventy-three dollars. Also, along those lines, just so that the people at home don't panic, the cost of that ambulance is split up between the City of Algoma, town of Annaphe, part of town of Lincoln, and part of town of Pierce. So the basic cost, our percentage would be about forty-eight point two-seven percent that the City of Algoma will be paying towards that ambulance. The rest will be coming from the townships. So I'm looking for a motion to authorize the purchase.
So moved.
Moved by Lee?
Second.
Second by Steve. Any questions or comments? Since it's, uh, amount of money, I'm going to ask for a roll call, please.
Merring?
Yes.
Dashlet?
Yes.
Boor?
Yes.
Lattenbach?
Yes.
Piarkey?
Yes.
Mervorden?
Yes.
Pabick?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Next is the creation of City of Algoma's social media page. Um, Erin, are you going to?
Yep.
Speak to that?
Um, so part of our employee handbook says that anytime we want to have a city-run, um, social media page, we have to have approval by the council. So that's what I'm here tonight, is to start a Facebook page for the City of Algoma. Um, with the upcoming, um, possible referendum for the public safety building, I feel like one way to promote it is a social media page, um, to try and get the word out there. Um, it could also be useful when we have brush pickup, garbage collection, um, just other things that are going on in the city to try and get the word out. I've been watching other municipalities do it and have learned a lot from what they post, and I kind of plan on tailoring it similar, similar to that. Um, but yeah, so that's my main objective tonight, is to just get the okay from you all before we go ahead and do that.
Did you hear that, Jake?
Yep. I'd, I'd, I'd make a motion to accept that.
Okay. Casey second?
Yep.
Motion's made and seconded to authorize the city to establish a social media page. Discussion, questions, comments?
I think it's a great idea. I mean, it's, it's an effective tool.
It is.
Utilize it to, to, you know, promote an upcoming budget meeting, maybe, you know, garner a little, little attendance.
Yeah.
You know?
That's true.
That's good. Thank you.
I've seen other municipalities where they post every meeting agenda. So from, um, the library to the public works, to every committee, board, commission that they have, they post that. Um, other ones, if you have bad inclement weather and you're going to have your snowplows out, they use their posting for that. Um, if you're trying to take a poll, um, I've seen it for the referendums, just get the word out there. And I think that's one of the biggest things that we struggle with here, is getting the word out to the general public, and I think that's one avenue that we could explore that has little to no, no costs associated with it.
John, you had a question?
Yeah, I do have a couple of questions. Are you going to be the author of the, um, of the social media page? And who else is going to have the ability to post on that page?
Um, I would assume that I would be the author, along with Jared and Amber. Just, I, I feel like it's best to have it in more than one person's hands. That way, if Jared needs to post something, if I'm on vacation, or if Amber needs to post something, um, I feel like it would be best to have the three of us be able to author that.
I would concur.
Yeah. Um, there, there are still some questions that we have to check with the league with about just starting it and just other small in-house things associated with it, but the first step was to have the council approve it.
So then would it, it would be up to each individual department to get you the information so that you posted it in a timely manner?
Correct.
You, you mentioned snow plowing, or?
Yep.
You know, if we had to have an emergency because?
Right.
You know, there was a lot of snow and we declared a, you know, an emergency?
You know, when the streets flood, that's a perfect example of what I've seen, is, is they post, you know, hey, this street from this to this is, is closed because it's flooded. You know, just quick updates for the community.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Go ahead, Casey.
Do you, do you find it, in, in viewing these, that there are any problematic side effects? Uh, and, and do you, do you plan on limiting the kind of conversation that can, can unfurl below it?
Yes. Um, we do, you do know that there will be controversy. You have seen other municipalities where you have people commenting on it, and they're not the best comments, they're not appropriate, any of that kind of stuff. That's what I want to check with legal with. I, I don't believe that we can delete anything that anybody posts unless Facebook finds it a violation. Um, Facebook's just one avenue of social media, I guess. Um, so, so that's kind of what I'm checking with them with, is, is how do you handle that kind of a situation? From what I've seen, you just have to kind of just let it go. The other thing that they said is you direct people back to your website. So anything you want to put on there, you put, you know, please check out, you know, if we're going to post for a position, please check out our website, and then you post the link for it. Um, but yeah, as far as you're concerned, that's, that was kind of my thought too, is how do we, how do we combat that? And what do we do when it happens?
Right. It's, I mean, it's a good opportunity to have dialogue with the community, but?
Right. Um, what I've seen others do is they don't converse back and forth. Um, if there is a controversial subject or something like that, you would have somebody post and say, please contact us at City Hall between the hours of eight and four, Monday through Friday, and then they list their phone number, or they list an email address. You really try and direct it away from that page.
Thank you.
I don't think we want to get into any internal discussion back and forth with anybody that comments.
No, yeah, you absolutely do not want to do that. That's, even if they would message the city's page, it's still us having an auto reply on there saying, you know, please contact City Hall, this is not monitored. Yet, there's no dialogue back and forth.
So if someone posts some misinformation, I know that Facebook will take it down if it's delivered misinformation. What about us?
I, I don't know. I, I don't know how we handle that. Um, I, I have seen it before, but it's, it's again, it's, it's a representative from that municipality commenting and saying, you know, please visit us, please, please do this. I think there would be opportunity for somebody like yourself, Casey, to say, what you wanted to say is your, your page is not the city page, your page is your personal page. So if there was misinformation and you knew that you could correct it, say there's, you know, somebody said your meeting's going to be at six, and Casey goes, no, actually, I'm on the city council, it's at six-thirty. Something like that, that you could do, but it wouldn't be us responding back saying, hey, it's at six-thirty. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm. Any other questions or comments? I do have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Jake, I missed it. I?
Aye.
Okay, got her. Oh, no, motion carries. Consideration of permanent sidewalk removal of nine hundred block of Mill Street and one hundred and fifty-four feet on Washington Street. This came before, if you read your minutes, um, it came, started out at the public works. There was a request submitted by one of the property owners on Mill Street, and that came about after we had the windstorm and one of the big trees went over, and the sidewalk was heaved up, and they looked at that, and they came back and they went to the public works and requested that we remove the sidewalk on that side of the street, since there is sidewalk on the east side of the street. And going up, uh, um, when you look at it, when you go up on Washington Street, there was only a hundred and fifty-four feet of sidewalk, and then there was nothing from that point on. So the public works looked at it, they sent it over to planning. Planning Commission had a meeting, uh, last week, uh, on Thursday night, and, uh, basically is recommending to the council that they allow the sidewalk to be removed in the nine hundred block of Mill Street and a hundred and fifty-four feet on Washington Street. Motion? Before we have discussion? Moved by Scott. Second by Jake. Discussion? Questions, comments? We'll start off, he had his hand up first. Go ahead, Casey.
From your perspective, upside, downside, and, you know, what would you think those are? And in here, there, there's some assumptions made, uh, by the author, discussing, you know, it wasn't finished on the thousand block, wasn't finished on the eight hundred block. Um, are, are those premises or those things true potentially that we're not ever going to put sidewalks in those spots, or at least in the foreseeable future? Are the assumptions they're making accurate?
For the foreseeable future, no. I have no intention, the city doesn't have any intentions to finish that block out, to put it in sidewalk. I'm not sure how many years, I think it says in the letter, in the eighties possibly? Fifties?
Fifty.
That that block was, was built, so it's, it's made it to two thousand twenty-one. Just that one street on Mill, and then that hundred and fifty-four feet going up Washington, which ends at a neighbor's proper, ends at a property, and then the rest of the block doesn't have anything all the way around it. If, if you want to save the trees or be able to keep the trees, now that's an argument that you could always have, is, you know, there's some very narrow tree lawns in the city. You know? But it's hard to make the claim against it to say, the sidewalk doesn't go all the way around the block anyway, it, it ends on Mill Street. So.
And would you potentially, because you had mentioned how on, on the current space, they, they couldn't put trees because of the size. So if we do in fact remove the, the sidewalk, what, what becomes the tree lawn? Uh, does that exist anymore? And would that then open up opportunities to, to plant, uh, more options for, for trees?
Well, what's currently going on in the street, the biggest issue there is just that nine hundred block of Mill Street, where you have an amount of trees, there's a setback from the curb because of the stop signs, you can't have trees there. And then you have your, still your locks coming out, um, so if your front door, there's a lock still, that's going to come straight out to the road, excuse me. And then you have your driveways, and there's a couple places where it looks like you could put a tree. Well, there's already, has been a tree there, there's still a stump underneath there, so you can't plant a tree there. And it gets pretty tough to plant trees over the top of water laterals and sewer laterals because it's just a long-term issue is what it needs to.
Sure. No, I, I had seen it today, and I had wondered about, put the pathways down, and that makes sense, so.
Those pathways would stay there. So the, where you come off their front door and you walk down, and you, then there's two or three steps, there would be a pathway to everybody's road, that if somebody parked on the street, they would be able to walk up into that pathway, and those would be added by those homeowners.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Steve?
I just think, uh, everybody here, including myself, we voted out a set of sidewalks, and now it seems like we opened up Pandora's Box. How many sidewalks are we going to take over? A city, not a, if you want trees, you should be in the woods. Uh, I, I just think as a city, we should stop tearing out the sidewalks and put sidewalks in as we can afford it. In nineteen fifty, oh, that's the way it worked, that's how we could afford it. But we, I mean, who comes next, and how many more sidewalks we pull out? Everybody, I know of four different streets where someone said the trees wrecked in my sidewalk, so do we pull out your sidewalk?
What if it's continuous? I mean, if they're the only block and there's?
So we live in the city, though. We have sidewalks. Our goal should be to put sidewalks in, not take sidewalks out.
I would concur with you, Steve, in that the city, folks who are looking at city development, cite sidewalk as being one of the principal, uh, ways that communities actually get together, and that folks who don't have sidewalks, their neighborhoods don't develop in the same way. Folks drive home, hit their garage and go in. We don't, they don't congregate out in front, uh, to have conversations about the neighborhood or anything like, anything like that. The other part of it is that there are grants that become available to make cities more walkable. In other words, getting folks out and walking and be, having folks who are, um, have mobility issues to be able to, uh, push them on, in wheelchairs or have, travel in wheelchairs that are not out in the street, and therefore becoming a traffic hazard. And that's the whole thing about living in a city and the population density being, uh, different from rural or suburban.
Yeah. I, I, to make it clear, I'm not against trees. I, I'm a tree guy, but we got to stop tearing the sidewalks out of the city, that's just my opinion.
Well, cities and, cities and trees have found a way to coexist, you know, sometimes one's got to give and sometimes the other's got to give. But you still have that setback, the city setback from, from the street, correct? On those, on those, on those lots? There's a setback for a city right of way. As far as what the right of way is? Whether the sidewalk is there or not there, the setback doesn't change.
The tree lawn is a tree lawn.
Correct. It would still be, yeah, there's, there's nothing different whether there's sidewalk there or grass there. The setback wouldn't move.
What is your recommendation as the public works director?
It's, I'll, I'll explain it to you the way I explained it to the public works. It's a big expense to go all the way around the block, so it's hard to say to the homeowners that are all in agreement that if, if I have to replace that sidewalk, I'm going to have to take a whole bunch of tree roots out, structural roots of the tree, which is going to kill the tree. For me to fix that, there's an expense to it. But then to fix all the way around the block, you're looking at probably sixty thousand dollars to put sidewalk all the way around the block. So it's dollars and cents is what it comes down to.
But in order to fix or put the sidewalk back, I mean, we're talking, that's pretty major. So would your recommendation be to do as what they're asking and remove the sidewalk?
Yes.
But then, when we open up that sidewalk and allow that tree to expand and it knocks the curb out, we lost the sidewalk and the tree.
And the curb.
And the curb.
You are correct. And, and that's every street in the city.
Correct. That's what I'm saying. We, we've got the problem everywhere, so we open up Pandora's Box and pretty soon they come swarming in.
I do, and this was brought up on Thursday night, this was brought up in part of our conversation at the public works level before it even went, is I think the, the concept or how many blocks do we have where there's not sidewalk all the way around the block? It ends at that one street.
Sure.
The next guy that says, well, I want my tree, I want my sidewalk tore out, I think you could go to that guy and say, well, your sidewalk is connected in every direction, why would we tear that out? We would replace it before we would tear it out. What does our comprehensive plan say? Because I don't think that we are, we are mute on that.
No, we are not. So, a- and that's where this gets more complicated from, from my perspective, and why is, in my role, I would have a very ambivalent recommendation here. The comprehensive plan says that we should maintain and repair our existing sidewalks and expand them where we can. So from a staff perspective, that's the closest thing I have to a policy on sidewalks. So when the question came before me, it's like, well, our comprehensive plan, again, the only thing I have is, the closest thing to a policy I have is we should replace it. Now, our code, uh, specifically contemplates this process that we're going through for either the creation of new or the permanent removal of existing sidewalks. Um, any repairs is strictly at the public works committee, but the creation of new or permanent removal of existing starts at public works, has a public hearing at planning commission with a recommendation, as you have before you tonight. The reason for that is, is my, my best, uh, my best speculation or my best inference from that is that there was a, an understanding that there could be exceptions that should be made to this, which is why you have this process. And so when you look at the facts that, as Matt says, if you, if you replace the sidewalk, it will in all likelihood result in the death of the trees, which going out there are large, healthy, mature trees, that, that's sort of the trade-off. You put the sidewalk in, you lose the trees. Um, if you want to keep the trees, don't do the sidewalk. Um, you combine that with the fact that going around the block, the sidewalk ultimately does terminate, it doesn't completely go around the block. What I would submit is that personally, my, my personal opinion and looking at our comprehensive plan says we should replace the sidewalk. However, I would submit that if you were to make an exception, this is, I, I would say that this is the time to do it.
If we were to replace a sidewalk, would we have to put in a straight sidewalk, or could it be winding sidewalk that goes around trees and, and doesn't damp, and reduces the damage to them?
I, I can only speak to how that would relate with the setbacks in the right of way, you know, making sure that it would stay within the right of way. I would have to defer to the public works director on the logistics of that.
I, has everybody gotten a chance to look at the nine hundred block of Mill Street? So it comes off the road, and then it, there's about a four-foot incline. So to John's question, there would not work. Um, that would, that wouldn't be able to happen to, unless we go down to almost a six or eight inch sidewalk, you know, to make that radius around the tree.
Any other questions or comments? Go ahead, Casey.
I think that, you know, as to, you're, you're concerned about precedent, Stephen, you kind of addressed it. Um, you know, that's, it's our obligation, our responsibility, being up here, that, you know, we will in fact encounter things that we've allowed before that we, we may not be able to allow in the future, you know? we may not be able to allow in the future, you know. So like, if you take it case by case, I don't think precedent should be a consideration. One other thought is, what, what happens when the, the current homeowners, well, does it make it less appealing to, to potential buyers in that particular place? Is there gonna be a concern to residents that are future tenants there, not current tenants? That there is no sidewalk, you know, that's, that's a consideration I have. I don't, I mean, that's obviously not an answerable, tangible question here, which is something I'm positing.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I have a motion on the floor in a second. I'm gonna ask for a roll call vote.
Merring.
Yes.
Is that a yes?
Is that a yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Pabick.
No.
Mervin.
Yes.
Piarkey.
Yes.
Lattenbach.
No.
Boor.
Yes.
Dashlet.
Oh.
Four, three?
Yep.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Consideration of proposal from SBN Hints Commercial Real Estate for exclusive rights to sell and exclusive right to lease. Looking for a motion.
Yes.
Moved by Jake.
Second.
Second by Scott. Discussion, questions?
Did we see the proposal before we consider it?
Yes, you did. It was discussed some time ago. At a finance and personnel meeting.
I don't know if we saw it, but you.
We went through it, right, right. And you had some concerns about certain things that I went back and got adjusted. You had given me the authority to go ahead and talk to them, which I did. And I'm just coming back now in open session to have approval to do it. And there's a motion in a second. Any other questions or comments?
Like, it's kinda light on details, right? I mean, it's, we're in open session. I understand, I understa, I mean, that might not be a savory thing you, you wanna hear here, but like it, it caught me by surprise, cause I forgot, then I just registered now what we're talking about. But I don't, you know, I don't know. I mean, maybe I'm overstep of what, it's this vague notion of something on here that anybody without previous connections to wouldn't be able to, to contemplate appropriately. But here we are in open session, contemplating it without knowledge of what we're actually contemplating outwardly, I mean.
Yeah, I, that's, that's not an, not inaccurate description. The reason that there's nothing in the agenda packet is because there is, it would've been impossible to separate what is confidential within that agreement, to publicly disclose it. Nonetheless, it needs, the action needs to be taken in open session, hence the mayor referring to a verbal discussion that had occurred previously in closed session. We looked at this in depth to see what, you know, it, it has to be done in open session, I guess is what I'm saying, but I, I can't provide, um, at this point, the, the terms that are within that agreement to the public, uh, because there is confidential information within that.
Okay.
Yeah, that's good.
Alright, I have a motion in a second on the floor. Any other questions or comments? Better do a roll call.
Dashlet.
Yeah.
Boor.
Yes.
Lattenbach.
I'm gonna say yes.
Piarkey.
Yes.
Mervin.
Yes.
Pabick.
Yes.
Merring.
Yes.
Thank you. Administrator's report.
First thing on here, uh, talking about the budget, we have, uh, coming up, the public hearing for the budget will be, uh, Tuesday, November sixteenth at four thirty PM. Uh, that'll be the public's opportunity to come and, and, uh, speak on the, uh, the proposed budget. Um, that will be available for, um, inspection at City Hall if anyone'd like to see a hard copy. The long and short of it is for our residents that with the proposed budget, uh, with the maximum allowable levy, we'll be looking at a one cent increase to our mill rate. And so in layman's terms, what that means is that for the median valued home, uh, within the city of Algoma, which is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars assessed valuation, you're looking at a one dollar and fifty cent increase on your annual tax bill for the city's portion of the tax bill. So again, that public hearing will be on Tuesday, November sixteenth. Leaf collection is underway, uh, so basically we just, uh, we do that until the snow makes it no longer feasible or all the leaves in the city are collected. We ask that, uh, residents put their leaves on the street, uh, right up against the curb, but on the street, uh, for ease of, of pickup by our Public Works crew. We will have a special council meeting tomorrow morning. Uh, you should've received an agenda for that. It's an invite for basically what we're, I apologize, in the afternoon. I, uh, tomorrow afternoon, um, at the, uh, down at Knutson Hall. Uh, this is with the Army Corps of Engineers, uh, some new management there. They'd like to do a meet and greet with the elected officials, so you are all invited. It is voluntary. Uh, we posted as an open meeting in the event that three or more of you attend. Uh, that would, you know, need to be posted because you're all there for one specific, uh, business item. But again, you're all invited, uh, tomorrow afternoon, not morning, tomorrow afternoon, uh, at the youth club at two thirty. And the purpose of the meeting, besides the meet and greet, will also be to talk about the South Pier, uh, what the plans are with that moving forward, um, and what we can expect, uh, with that.
Are policy matters that you state here, are those on the federal side or on our side?
Uh, their side. Yeah, when I, when I say the, I, I just, when I say policy matters, I just meant specifically the South Pier. I gue, I guess that was probably a overly complex way to word that, but that was just the, that, that, that's the primary, as far as a specific matter goes, other than a meet and greet. It's the South Pier is what they wanna primarily talk about.
Okay, as opposed to walking us through their whole process?
Right.
Which would be a policy.
On here also I have housing. And so I added this because, um, last week I had, uh, a monthly meeting with the Kiwanee County Administrator. So that would be myself, my counterpart from Kiwanee, the county administrator and the Village of Luxembourg Board President. We have a monthly meeting where we, we get together and discuss, uh, some overlapping issues. And the big one that we, we all now have, have come to realize and appreciate is actually something I just talked about recently at the Finance and Personnel, which is housing. And we are, we're, we're finally all coming to the realization that we are all on the same boat. Uh, when it comes to housing and specifically our need for what we would call middle-class or working-class housing. So, uh, median household value of say anywhere from a hundred and fifty to low two hundreds, uh, sort of that, that, you know, that middle-class housing stock and then our, our desperate need for, uh, that. Specifically as it relates to, uh, basically we want our employers within our communities to have somewhere for their, their employees to, to live within the communities. And obviously as the city, we have a vested interest in seeing that as well. So we're going to be, uh, either our next monthly meeting or scheduling a special meeting with our group, uh, to talk about this and see if there's any, anything that we can be doing and potentially partnering like with KCEDC for example, and just sort of brainstorming on different ways we can tackle this. Uh, because again, we, we all recognize this as a growing, uh, issue and concern and, and this was obvious, th- this is even going back before, um, the current housing stock shortage that we all, all, uh, see right now with, you know, sky-high, uh, soaring housing prices. And especially within that price range is, is really, there's not a, there's really no housing stock within that, uh, price range. So I just wanted to update you guys on that. That's sort of our big, uh, countywide issue that we're looking at right now and are gonna be zeroing in on here. Um, I also have on here an update with our landfill regarding PFOS. I just had a conference call last week, uh, with our engineers, TRC. You might remember a couple months ago, you guys approved a contract with them to basically do the sample testing and reporting to the DNR. Uh, we got the results back, so they took four borings, two up gradient, two down gradient. And so the two, uh, that were down gradient, uh, came back with no tra, uh, no traces of the PFOS, so that was obviously very good. Two up gradient, uh, samples came back at seventeen nanograms per liter. Currently the EPA has a recommendation of not to exceed one hundred nanograms per liter. But, uh, TRC is anticipating that the Wisconsin DNR is gonna be putting on a regulatory limit of twenty nanograms per liter. So obviously we're still under that, but again, that's anticipated, so we don't yet know what the next steps are with that, but I wanted to apprise the council of, of what those samples came back at. So we'll obviously continue to work with TRC on the DNR as need on this and continue to report this. We're gonna have to report this basically in perpetuity. But nonetheless, I just wanted to fill you guys in on the, the, uh, where that's at now that we got our sample, our test samples back. So, uh, with that, are there any questions?
Yeah, you can't answer this one.
Don't try me.
I'll try. This is, um, you know, if they're going to twenty nanograms, um, what's that based on?
Oh, yeah, you're right. I, 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 I can't answer.
Why would, why would you reduce it, you know, from a hundred to, to twenty without a reason?
Um, I think a dip might, and this is just speculation on my part, but I would suspect that it's a difference in philosophy between the federal, um, government structure that, within the EPA, what their standards have been over the last, say, five, six years, versus the Wisconsin DNR, which historically is more strict on these things. Uh, you see with phosphorus limit as well.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they tend to be more s, quite a bit more strict on these things.
Okay, so there's evidently some research going on that indicates a lower threshold is, is necessary.
Okay, thank you.
If we do get down on that PFOS, does our monitoring become different then? Does our, our, uh, situation change?
Possibly. And that's what we, we don't know yet. Right now, all I have is, here are the results we got with this. It's under what we are expecting the regulatory limit to be by the state, but that could always change. I mean, the state could come back and say, no, actually we wanna have it at ten nanograms per liter. Obviously, we very much don't want that because I don't know, I don't wanna know what that entails, uh, to get that down. Uh, so for, for anyone who's unfamiliar, basically what PFOS is, it's like what's in Teflon. Uh, so you're nonstick, it's a, basically a water impermeable chemical that's highly toxic to, uh, to humans and other, other life. That's why a nanogram, I'm not a, I'm not a chemist, but I'm pretty sure a nanogram means like one millionth of a gram. So if you think about how small that is.
Milligram, microgram, nanogram, I think you're right.
Yeah, I think a nanogram's a millionth of a gram per liter, so we're talking about extremely small amounts that are deemed to be dangerous to human and, and, uh, environmental health. So anyway, we'll keep monitoring this and I will keep you guys updated on any pertinent updates, but wanted to let you know what our samples came back at.
Jared, I got a question.
Yep.
We went away from reading the committee reports at the council meetings and we're doing a, I guess you're doing a taping.
Yep.
Prior, it's supposed to be out a couple days before the council meeting. Is that happening in a timely manner? Or are we not being able to do that, that I need to look at going back to reading the minutes?
Um, we are having some difficulty with the recordings. I would suggest before we go back to the way we were doing it is let me look at if there's a better way we can be scheduling it on our end to better get everyone on the recording before the council meetings.
Okay. Alright. Any other questions of Jared? Alright, then we'll move on to Mayor's Report. The only thing I have coming up is that, uh, on November tenth at seven PM at the PAC, it is a Veterans Day concert. Um, it's a good way for people to honor the veterans, those that, uh, have gone before us and those that are still present. So if you can make it, again, it's November tenth at seven PM and the community band will be putting on a Veterans Day concert. So if you can make it, I know, I know they would appreciate it, so. That's all I have, agenda items for next meeting. You know the format, get ahold of Jared or Aaron and they will make sure it's on the agenda. Next meeting date is Monday, December sixth at six PM. I'll accept a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight five one C, considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which a governmental body has jurisdiction or exercise the responsibility and based on the recreation position.
So moved.
Moved by Scott.
Second.
Second by Casey. Roll call vote please.
Dashlet.
Yeah.
Merring.
Yes.
Pabick.
No.
Mervin.
Yes.
Piarkey.
Yes.
Lattenbach.
Yes.
Boor.
Yes. Yes.
Six yes, one no.
Correct.
Okay. I'll wait till Lee gets the door shut and Randy leaves soon.